No action was taken.
Relating to the first executive session, I would move to approve a development agreement between the city of Concordia, TransEquity, to support development of new housing in Concordia.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hase to approve the development agreement through said parties. Do you have any further discussion?
I ask our city manager to kind of hit the high points of that development agreement. So TransEquity Group is going to develop some housing within the city limits of Concordia, and that is going to require some additional infrastructure construction, including some streets and utilities and that sort of thing. So for that purpose, they're asking the city's partnership and support of using the rural housing incentive district as one of the tools to be able to get that done. It'd be slightly different than the way that we work Saint Joseph's subdivision. In the, in this case, the city would not be obligated to have any cash outlay upfront, but would rather support and not protest getting you up creating rural housing incentive districts. When they finance, when the group, private group finances the infrastructure construction, then they would utilize the incremental property tax revenue generated from the new housing to, to repay them, to repay their investment. So it, it functions the same as ours does at the Saint Joseph's subdivision, but there's no cash outlet or obligation on the city's part other than just support, our support. So that's good. Additionally, the city would be obligated to support them through the development process, just as we would any other developer. So that's helping with the, through the planning process, through building permit process, anything else that they need to make sure that they're building a quality product for us. In exchange, then they would be, they would be committing to building new homes in Concordia and to be able to provide for that need that, as stated in the 2022 Concordia Housing Study and Market Analysis to support that market rate of housing. Anything else you want to add?
No further discussion. I will take a vote. All in favor?
I.
I'll oppose, same sign. Ocean passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Next, we'll have proclamations, recognition, presentations. Moving on to the Motorcycle Awareness Month Proclamation. Mr. John Puckett here. To do the proclamation? Yeah. No? Okay. I will do the proclamation. Whereas motorcycle riding has become a popular form of transportation and recreation for a vast and growing number of people in the state of Kansas. And whereas there is a growing need to promote safety for motorcyclists and cooperation among drivers of all motor vehicles on the road. And whereas it is especially important that drivers be aware of motorcycles and give them our space and respect on our streets and highways. And whereas during the month of May, all streets and highway users should unite in the safety of motorcyclists striving to share the roadways in the state of Kansas. Now therefore, I, Amy Jackson, Mayor of Concordia, do hereby proclaim May 2025 the Motorcycle Awareness Month. Next, we will have the OCCK budget request.
Hello. Okay. Got a short presentation and then a request at the end. Our, our mission statement revolves around promoting and contributing to the success of our customers, exercising and/or influencing leadership in the creation of quality communities and ensuring our financial success so that our customers can be successful. We've got a few stories that drive us. Kendra asked me to read something, but first passenger Judy would like to share some words.
Hi. My name is Judy. I'm from Louisiana. This is Juan. He's from Puerto Rico. We met online, fell in love, and moved to Concordia. We've been together a year, but we've been in Concordia since October of 2024. All right. I just want to say a few things how OCCK has impacted us. OCCK has made a dramatic difference in our lives. It affords us a sense of community and family. We have no one and no means for day-to-day transportation without OCCK. For us, it's a lifesaver. When we moved to Concordia, we left friends and family behind. During this time, Juan was told he had to receive 39 radiation treatments to get rid of his cancer. The treatments were at the Tammy Walker Cancer Center in Salina, Kansas. OCCK provided us with day-to-day transportation to receive his treatments, which in turn saved his life. OCCK lends us the ability to perform day-to-day tasks like grocery shopping, pharmacy, doctors. Um, and some people use OCCK to give back and forth to their jobs and also leisure. It is a service that supports a sense of family where there, when there is no one else. I've said OCCK has made, made and continues to make a dramatic difference in our lives. Dramatic because it describes how necessary this service is to all of us. Thank you OCCK for your services. May God continue to bless our community, our lives with OCCK. Thank you.
What if, that doesn't really, well, I think Juan wants to say. All right. So, before I switch over to Kendra's words, our ride blitz, we recognized that everybody was having to call two weeks in advance to get their ride because we had such high demand. People weren't getting the ride times that they were truly wanting. So we thought, okay, let's, let's get a bunch of resources in town. We had the five drivers in an eight-hour period, pretty much from eight to four. Some drivers drove through that lunch hour. We gave 62 rides that day. On a typical day with the two drivers that we have, each one can give 12 to 20 rides depending on that, on, on how the manifest roll. But 12 is usually a good number to not be rushing, not to increase the risk. So to give 62 rides, that demand is huge, absolutely huge. So we know that the demand is there. The need for our vehicles in this community is huge. And all the rides that day, except for one, was based in Concordia. There was one trip that we took out into the county. Every single ride was inside the city limit. So that's amazing. So we're trying to strategize. How can we, how can we get more trips done with the same amount of drivers, same amount of vehicles? I'm going to hop over. Kendra was hoping to be here today, but she says she's on mom duty. So I'm going to read her words really quick and then we'll keep going. She says, "I apologize for not being able to attend in person as I'm fulfilling my mom duty and attending my daughter's high school softball banquet. Concordia, Kansas is my hometown, and the concept of rural living holds significant meaning for me. Over the past year, I have been actively discussing crisis services, managing various crisis situations, and collaborating with numerous people and organizations within our community. When I mention crisis services, many people think of people in our community who may be facing financial difficulties, mental health challenges, or homelessness. Indeed, I have had the opportunity to work with many different crisis situations. What sets OCCK apart is our commitment not only to support people or their families during a crisis, but also to assist with stabilization afterwards. This may involve providing transportation to medical appointments, helping to restore, restore utility services, arranging for a nurse to educate on medication management, and coordinating with schools if children are involved. Without addressing the stabilization aspect, people often find themselves back in crisis, perpetuating a cycle of distress. Many communities are grappling with the issue of people being dropped off, and Concordia is no stranger to this. These people arrive from various locations. Recently, Chief Brent Guerin requested 30 bus passes to facilitate transportation for people traveling north or south, and we were pleased to provide those to the police department. We believe it is important not to simply relocate someone to another community without assistance. Therefore, when we are informed, we work with the person to help them reach their desired destination. Many are heading south, and we have successfully transported people to the state line, coordinated with different bus services to bring them closer to their destination. Throughout the past year, I've worked in numerous crisis situations with our community. Many people are unaware that they are in a crisis until they find themselves in the middle of it. Upon receiving a call, I meet with the person to determine what support I can arrange. An elderly woman residing on Highland Drive was developed, has developed a fear of driving, prompting her children to suggest a move to assisted living. However, she is determined to remain in her home for as, as long as possible. To support her, I have assembled a team that assists her with doctor visits, grocery shopping, and other local errands. One of our occupational therapists has also visited her home to implement various technologies that enable her to navigate her living space independently. Additionally, a nurse is available to assist her in contacting her doctor whenever she feels unwell. I have also had the privilege of supporting numerous farmers in maintaining their livelihoods, not having to sell their farms, and ensuring they and their spouses can attend medical appointments and come to town to shop. These services are vital for keeping people in our community, allowing them to contribute economically and receive healthcare in Concordia. If we fail to provide such support in our rural areas, we risk losing people to cities where all of these supports are. Thank you, and please do not hesitate to reach out with any questions. Kendra. Pop back over. Okay. I got rides by type for you guys. It was very interesting this year. Oftentimes, we see a little bit more 50/50, but this year, 75% did not need the use of a lift or a ramp, meaning we're transporting ambulances for people. And 85% of the people that we gave rides to were under 60. So often, people think, oh, OCCK is for people who cannot walk, and OCCK is for elderly. This data from the past year in 2024, that shows us that we have people going to work. They are going to shop. Shopping includes groceries, all, all kinds of amazing things that make their lives better, and they're not just having their kids take away their keys. They're truly trying to live their lives. And then I broke down our trip purpose for you. 37% of the rides that we gave last year was for retail. So that's a pretty broad brush. Of course, Walmart's in there. Rods was very, very popular, Town and Country jitters. Medical needs, that's another one that was very, very high. Anything pharmacy, which could also count as retail in some, some situations. Mental health needs, North Central Kansas Medical Center, which I have been chatting with Salina Regional and working through their priorities and making some connections there. So that'll be exciting to continue more free rides to the hospital. And then 28% is work. So really, we only have 2% of people not identifying where they're going. And that is a huge shift from what I have been able to present in the past. Our dispatchers have done a lot more work getting to know the person so they feel comfortable sharing their trip purpose so we can have better data to share with you. So there's 2% others. If you add up all those numbers, 2% of other, they just didn't feel like sharing it. And what I found interesting, 2% of rides were to the school. So in the case that a bus goes down, that, a school bus that has a lift, OCCK can step in. If mom has a shift change at work, but we don't live in an area that is served by the bus, we can help that kiddo get to work. OCCK is very trusted, makes it easier on the parents to do what they need to do to maintain their livelihood. And then this year, our request, of course, the consistent $5,000 would be absolutely appreciated. If we can bump that to 7,500, we would be very, very grateful. I was able to minimize some costs. We've had some driver changeover, and we've looked at doing things a little bit differently, and that has created some efficiencies in fuel and vehicle maintenance repairs. So we do see a lower budget this year, but continuing to grow our partnership together, increasing by $2,500 would be massively, massively appreciated. But of course, if $5,000 makes more sense at this time, in this, oh, it's an interesting time in our lives. If five makes more sense to the commission, I absolutely appreciate that as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks for the additional information.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion item, Community Activities Center. Mr. Fisher, this is going to be a tag team discussion with Chris Atkins, our rector, your friend Gildan, Director of Security, Foundation of Cloud County, and myself. You have a memo in front of you. When we brought this to you last December, you'd asked us some questions, and specifically, one of them was to take the, the plans that have been presented and then go back to, go back to your check and visit a little bit about, actually, are you missing something? They're not. Yeah, it's, it's in the agenda packet. It was in the, I'm sorry. That's okay. So we'd ask, ask for some value engineering options. One that had great level discussion was for ground-level walking track. And we did, Chris visited with several different folks, so he can, he can visit about the operational side of that. From the construction side of that, there really was no net savings to be, be had on that. So, and the reason for that is that if we put the ground-level walking track around any space that was inside that building, the building footprint was going to have to be enlarged to, in order to maintain the existing programming space. Once the building enlarges, it takes away from the cost of elevating. That goes away, but then you add additional steel that has to go further out. And so it would, it would be offset there. And we talked about a height change that would be achieved by eliminating the elevated walking track, and that really doesn't take away much. It's, it's actually cheaper to build up than it is to build out. And so it really didn't save that much. Our ceiling heights are already going to be fairly far up there because the way this was designed was what we had asked for, for fly-up volleyball nets and fly-up basketball goals, and then the use of that additional higher space. So we looked further. What would happen if we reduced the area of the second floor? So instead of building out as large of a second floor, take away some of that space. And if we reduce a portion of the second floor that had a multi-purpose room and simulator space and went to a smaller landing, there was some cost savings achieved, but it, it wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot. Again, the, the main cost is through the structure, HVAC systems, lighting systems, that sort of thing. So it went down slightly. We looked at reducing the building footprint on, on the first floor and reducing the second floor, and that did eliminate some more costs, but we still didn't get into that significant millions of dollars of range of, of reduction. So, and then, and the second option for reducing the first floor space by about 3,000 square feet, a portion of that reduction came from reducing the space between the basketball courts from 21 to 12 feet. And one of the things that we discussed would mean that that would not allow for seating space in between the courts, which then eliminates the ability to host tournaments, for example. You could still use it as practice courts, but it would eliminate that ability. And all, all of the building reduction items also included reducing finishes and changing out some acoustical panels and that sort of thing, try to find some cost savings. So you go from kind of an aesthetically attractive space down to just a very basic bare bones space, like, like what you would see in here. Your basic drywall, your basic acoustic ceiling tile. You don't end up with any of those metal panel finishes, for example. Where the result of the cost savings, we were not able to get the space down below 16 million. I mean, if you recall, the original cost estimate had us around that, that upper 16 to 17 to 20 million, depending on inflation and how long it went out. So we weren't able to get the, the program of spaces as designed down below 16 million. Talked a little bit about elimination of specifically program spaces. For example, if you took away the pickleball courts, if you took away the basketball volleyball courts, took away the walking tracker, took away the top lot jungle gym, those would be significant space savings, and those would be real drivers of driving the cost down. We didn't explore those because those were the main program of spaces that we had discussed since 2022. Now, we did take this, this information, and with the permission of JGR, it did go and visit with, with the accounting board. They were suggested by a couple of folks. They do some free cost estimating. They just finished building our new hospital and the college's new building. So we felt comfortable that they were used to spaces around here. So we did take the information to them, had them take a look at it. And our goal with that was our, our costs that were being provided within range. Our architect had it verified with the contractor that he knew. He said they were consistent, but we wanted an independent analysis. And what we came back in is that we were very close and within range with all the major components. So we're still in that 17 to 20 million range, depending on when we build it. If we build it now, or if we wait a year or two, the cost will escalate. We know that the cost will escalate between 3% and 5% a year. That's just a given. And it's, it's been fairly, fairly consistent for a number of years. So that, that's what we found as far as the, the building components of things. We'd like to go through and share with you what we found in operational cost. Was, was the other component that you asked us to look at. You also asked us to look at potential funding options. So we'd like to present all the information to you if we could, and then go back in and visit. Would that be all right? Okay. Chris, you want to take it away on the operational cost?
Yeah, as you can see in the packet, a lot of these numbers are based in comparison to several other wrecking community centers that I talked to and got their budget layouts. Nobody's ever directly the same as the town. Every building's a little bit different. But based on the square footage, a lot of utility numbers is where it came from. The staffing's the trickiest part. Every staff's a little bit different. Every staff said, rich part's a little bit different. So this is what our best estimate was for staffing, you know, another full-time requisition with the building, but also several part-time employees to fill in those daily hours. We looked at the hours of 7 to 9, I believe, Monday through Thursday, and then limited hours Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It could be on the bigger weekends. So but those were all those numbers are coming from. Any questions on that? Like comparison to the other centers?
The operation, operating or repair maintenance lines, $3,000 like that is adequate for, for that annually? Or, I mean, that's like repair of the building?
Yeah, I mean, our goal is with a new building, you're not going to have those repairs early on. So you're kind of banking that a little bit, but.
It seems like hours would be different. Like you would do four hours on the weekends and Fridays because that's when people aren't working and would want to use the facility. Is that, is that just kind of an idea at this point in time? Or would it be kind of like the, where we adjust where is needed?
I think everything is able to adjust with on Concordia's needs. Like I said, that was based off another 50,000 square foot community center. And I think that was Burlington's estimate. A lot of the weekend hours, apple leaves, some of that with theirs. They see the high traffic after school. And actually, in their summer, they back off even more because it's less travel, contact to be active in them. So it's just one of those things where what's going to fit best for our population or our workers. Kind of started.
Any other questions on operations? We can move on to some different funding options. And, and what these funding options are primarily geared toward is, is the construction of the building, but there's also a segment there for what could be used for operations. Brendan, do you have a whole thing else?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank Amy and with a little bit of Chris's help too. She has put a lot of time into figuring out all of those funding options that are available. And secondly, I want to thank, first of all, Ted and Nancy Collins. Ted was the initial driver of this when he shuffled into my offices and said, "Could you find us a place to play pickleball inside?" So, so kudos to him for getting us going. And then the other walkers and pickleballers that are here in support of the idea too. So thank you for all of that. In looking at funding options, of course, I now am living kind of in the grant world and found as I jumped into it more on the other side of it, I'm kind of living more in the giving out grants. But in the getting grants world, as I jumped into that, I found it's changed to also, it's gone to where they now are asking something they call an LOI, which is a low of intent. In other words, what do you think you're going to do instead of just, just putting in an application right off? But all of them require you to have a certain amount of information before you even fill out the application for, for getting a grant. So while grant funding might be out there, it was very difficult to even really get started on that. I called and talked and talked to a couple of people that I might have some connections to, and, and they said, yeah, that sounds very interesting. But, you know, I say that to people too, when they call and say, can I apply for a grant? So, so I don't know how much weight to put into that. So spend some time on that. And then, of course, I don't know how far Amy wants me to go. Can, okay, so, so all of us know that, that original, she already talked about that original amount, which, you know, made us all fall off of our chair and, and be sad because, because it is expensive. I think it's realistic, but it is expensive. And so as I was trying to figure out other ways and looking at grants and ways that we could fund it, and she's come up with a lot of good ways there too. Then all of a sudden, yeah, a miracle happened, and we get this notice that the Department of Commerce has already set up a program geared, geared towards exactly what we're trying to do, and that is a community activity center. So they have three different plans already drawn up for different sizes of centers, small, medium, and large. And along with those plans set up, their idea was to get people, it's called blueprint to build. So they want to get you rolling. So you don't have to spend a lot of time and a lot of money doing what we just did, spending the money we had and the time designing it. But along with that, the even better thing is that they have a grant possibility. And so because of our LMI, we have the opportunity to get possibly $2.5 million to use towards building a new facility. Of course, that 2.5 million dollars would have to be matched. And thing that is maybe a challenge is that it has to be matched before we can do our official application. It is open until the middle of November. If we were to choose to use sales tax as one of those and actually have to have an election, that election would have to be done before, what's, what is it this year? November 4th is the actual general.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be before then. Yeah, right, right. So there, of course, would have to be a lot of work to be done. And I know the big question is, what is the, what is their facility that they've designed look like? If you've gone online, you can see the outdoor rendering of it, which, in my opinion, is pretty cool again. But it's not all about cool looking. We want function. So some of you might have been able to go on further and look. I talked a lot with the Department of Commerce. They have been very, very cooperative, very encouraging, very honest in that they put this program together because they want to help. They also put this program together without totally knowing exactly what they wanted or what they're doing. Like, for instance, when I was visiting with them and saying, one of our really must haves, in our opinion, is an elevated walking track. They said, why? Why? Why does that matter? So I started telling them, it's like, oh, wow. Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, yeah. Okay, I get it. So within their plans, and I need to back up and say, keep in mind, their plan is half, nah, more than, yeah. It's about, yeah, it's a little more than half of, of our plan size-wise, which means it doesn't have everything that we want. Now, they also will tell you that you can customize it. That's within a realm of, I, I don't know that adding to the whole of it to have an elevator. Hold of it to have a, an elevated track was really within their mind of customizing. I think they were thinking you could move a wall over a couple of feet or. Paint a room a different color or something along that line. Uh, so that might be a stretch. But that being said, they were very kind and said, you know, that would have to be something we would have to talk about. Because things are not totally in stone is the way I read that. So uh, there are spaces that are in their um, list of what all they're providing. Like, for instance, one of them is a telemed room, which is a tiny little room if you're zooming with a doctor. Well, our library already does that, and so we probably wouldn't, wouldn't have that in there, so we could repurpose that. Another space was a um, workout facility with equipment. And uh, our group, when we got together, immediately said, we're not gonna do that and step on the toes of those businesses that provide that already. So we could purpose that to repurpose that to the top block or per se. There's been other discussion of um, use of office space and whether there's enough there. I haven't cleared with my board, but I have thought of the option of having the community foundation office there and the community foundation paying rent. Which would help um, offset the daily cost of of uh, supporting it. Uh, so I guess there's just a lot of possibilities and ifs. Uh, granted, the one with the, with the two point five possibility. Is not even near as cool or as good as the first one that was set up. It has everything that 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 the the um, strategic doing committee um, wanted. But I guess we're at the point where we have to decide, you know, which way we want to go.
What's the, what was the cost of the large? You know, you said there's small, medium, large. Did they give you a cost estimate for the large design that they're proposing?
I don't know if Commerce wants that. I don't know. Whether, let me, let's put it this way, significantly less. But keep in mind, it's about half the size too.
I think we could safely say um, if if it was priced out by unit price, given that it was scaled smaller. It would be in line with the cost that we've verified with others, so.
I think that's fair, yeah. But keep in mind also, if we were to be able to customize it. To closer fit our needs, that would increase that cost too, obviously. And um. Department Commerce, he said, you know, perhaps this is a situation where you have a couple phases. You know, you do it like what we have here, and then you have a second phase of customizing. Whatever you're not getting to begin with, or whatever you need to change, or even. The payment part of it is, is based in different, two different sections. One is, is theirs to fund theirs and then. It would be separate funding for. For, for the customization.
Are there major components of what we would like in there that are not included, but wouldn't be included with the blueprint to build?
Um, the top lock was not in there. Um, the um. The walking track. The walking track was on this level. I mean, main level, it was not elevated. Uh, which means that there wasn't an elevator, because obviously you would have that if you had that. There's a kitchen area, there is a meeting room area, um, one office. I think, I think we would need more than one office, um, so we'd be short there. Uh, the. They're calling them locker rooms. It, I, I don't know if, if that's what they're just using as. A P C name for restrooms, I don't know. Uh, uh, but I think they were just, it was a placeholder kind of thing. You obviously are gonna have restrooms and they're obviously gonna be A D A compliant, so I think it was more of a placeholder. Um, so that's there.
Here's the list of their.
Right, right, right.
Multi-purpose room with flexible use, serving kitchen with fixed equipment, fitness center, telemedicine office. Welcome to lobby, gathering area, restroom, storm shelter, customizable, exterior and interior. Finishes, cover patio and overhead doors for the fitness center, work, multi-purpose rooms.
Which that was kind of a cool concept. Yeah, yeah. And I don't know if it's tall enough, but it's kind of cool that you could probably line it for pickleball too, if it's big enough. I don't know how big of an area it is. For more pickleball, obviously you still want your in insight. Obviously pickleball would be just lined on, on the basketball court, basketball slash volleyball courts that are in there. There would not be a dedicated pickleball space like there was on the first drawing.
When they had two, two basketball courts, I would say that.
Two basketball courts, yeah.
But we, but we couldn't figure out if it was big enough for any seating around. We, we didn't have any dimensions to see if it was large enough for any seating or if it would be strictly practice. So if it would support rec with, with games, with like a rec level seating or anything else, we couldn't tell that.
In the drawing, there is a little section that says seating. Yeah, and I, but I don't know how much seating. I don't know what, uh, you know, how big that would be. But, and it looked, but it looked like you could run one large court or two side by side courts.
Our design was the same with one large or two side by sides?
Two full-size side by sides.
Two full-size sides too?
Yes.
All right, so that'd be like two basketball or four volleyball?
It said high school level, yes. It was kind of weird that was worded like this here. Gymnasium with sports flooring and space for two high school basketball courts. Or crosshorts, or volleyball courts, or pickleball courts, perimeter walking track and optional divider curves.
That's in there for, or.
Theirs, that's theirs.
One thing that we did discover too, as we visited with, with different folks, um, we were told with the. School function is that that sports floor, that's that rubbery flooring. We, we were told that um, Acacia sanctioned competition events could not happen on that floor. You would have to deal with the gym floor, so that would be a consideration. So we'd have to ask about being changed out. If it were to be for, for junior higher high school games, for example. But recreation, it wouldn't make a difference.
Where Eisenhower actually, Manhattan actually had the mondo flooring, a rubber flooring. Looks pretty cool, they liked it, but it wouldn't be a viable surface for Acacia.
He said it's had a multipurpose room.
Yes, yes.
With a kitchen.
With a kitchen, uh-huh, yes. Um, and that multipurpose room um. As, as drawn here would be for hold up to a hundred and twenty-eight people. And. It is right next to the fitness center in the drawing, so I don't know if you could bomb some of the fitness center. Area into that if you wanted something bigger. Uh, I don't know.
Well, I was just thinking with all the meeting spaces. We've accumulated.
Yeah.
Town whether that maybe something could be changed or eliminated.
The, the thing we're taking out of the other one that we drew, um, we had an exercise area. And, you know, for, um, I obviously don't exercise much, uh, give me some help here, jazzercise, okay, something like that. Or um, the K S U extension has, you know, like some of those kind of plans. And they've told me before that they have a hard time finding places to have those. So I was kind of excited about having that available or any kind of classes that they have or. Jazzercise or, you know, whatever, um, or for those kinds of things.
Uh, multipurpose space, we were thinking about the functionality of one of these centers. If we wanted to host a, like a youth basketball tournament, youth volleyball tournament, pickleball tournament, that multipurpose space. And our minds was also doubling as like the hostess or coach, coaches lounge and then also doubling for concession. So if we repurposed it for something else, then it wouldn't be available. I'm assuming that we can host anything, I guess. And I don't know, Chris, you probably know those different rules for use the rec programming, use all the rec programming on the sports floor. It may look like a difference for that.
So if you do a sales tax of ten million and the price tag's nineteen. Um, the grant does two point five, so there's, what is that, six point five left? What's the plan for raising the rest of that?
And I guess all along, and I'm not answering your question directly. My, my hope all along was that it would be one-third, one-third, one-third to finance it, one-third being grants. One-third being private donations and one-third being sales tax. Um, so what you just said is more than one-third sales tax, so maybe it wouldn't have to be exact amounts, one-third, but, but some portion of each of those. So. So that excited me to get the two point five from them helps. The other thing I don't know, um, and Amy or Chris might be able to help me and I'd have to ask Commerce is, you know, that land was quote given. Or, we could say it was, can we, can we count that towards our two point five match, the value of the land? I, I don't know. I don't know, but that would be very helpful if we could. And, and the improvements that are already on the land, those don't come for free, right? I think, I think it cost you guys something to, to have, so, so I would hope that would be a step in the right direction. I mean, we could use that as part of. So, um, and how I said this already, my other dream is. To find a donor that would give a million dollars and that million dollars would be a fund that would be invested. And after one year, then there would be a spendable of fifty thousand dollars, which would go a long way towards paying the salary. Of, of a person that was. So. Do I have a million dollar donor? Yeah, and I don't know if this is what they want to do, so. So you never know, yeah. That's my job, you never know.
There was a loan component, that's listed on here.
I'm sorry?
There was a loan component, can we hear more about that?
Yeah, and I like that it said, what did it say here, that it can be. A low interest loan that fifty-five percent of which could be converted to a grant.
Yeah, so the, the same gentleman helped us out with, or helped, helped the hospital out with the loan for that facility. It was the same type of community facilities type grant. Um, so, or loan, then fifty-five percent could be converted into a grant, so it's, it's pretty basic. If you're doing a community facility that meets their criteria, then you qualify.
So that's the could be, that's where the could be.
Yeah.
Tell me how a taxing entity can do a loan instead of a bond.
That's deep in my files that I don't have on the tip of my tongue, but is it possible to do a loan? Not, not, not generally, but there has been some, so like, for example, there were, if we go back to that. Oh goodness, it, it was a special deal, but during, I think it was twenty twenty-one, we had that deep freeze era. That it messed up all the natural gas facilities and caused a spike in natural gas. There were special loans that were offered to municipalities at that point in time to help them pay their gas bills to help out the, help out the others. So I think that there's ways that you can do it. I just don't have that on the tip of my tongue, but I can find that out once you guys know for sure. If we've been qualified for that, or if we'd have to go through like a different entity to make that work.
And I apologize, Brenda, if you, if you said this, uh, I just didn't hold on to it. If, if we, the blueprint to build a grant is only if we use their plan or if. Would it be available if we went with a different plan?
To my knowledge, only if they use their, if we link use their plan. I can also tell you that I asked them about who did the design work. I mean, drew everything and that was Hutton. And I said, so can we, or do we have to use Hutton? And they said, and I don't know why, that they said, no, you can't use that, you have to find somebody else. So I don't know that I answered your question. I would have to ask them again. I haven't. I mean, I think I'm, I think I'm confusing them because I keep coming up with random, random ideas like that.
Well, I, I think that's great, uh, because it means that there's additional information to be found, so I appreciate that effort on your part. Um, I think that maybe these sorts of programs are wonderful, but I think if we found with the housing program. It's a really great idea that we, we throw out there and then we figure out how to make it happen along the way. I guess it's good for us to be on the forefront of that, of helping, provides them with that information, but. That was, yeah, if we, we have this plan that makes a lot of sense for us in our community, but we want to pursue this grant. Does that then tie us into, which, which I could also see from the perspective that they would want to promote their specific. Plan and and demonstrate that as a, as a project process instead of funding a different project.
Well, and we also have to keep in mind, I, I mean, as much as I'm thrilled that that's out there. I also am smart enough to know that there's only fourteen million in the pool. And we're not the only people in the world that want to do this.
Right.
And so, first of all, we can't mess around a lot. I, I mean, I think time is of the essence.
Sure.
But. At the same time, you know, who knows, I, yeah. But it's, it's difficult to just automatically find two point five million dollars in time to, to apply.
Most thrilled to that, part of that was. Kansas City, speak of Lawrence, bigger cities aren't eligible for it.
Right.
But it's for smaller communities. Get these facilities.
I think we can have them. A little bit of a head start in doing this research and planning though, where maybe some other communities haven't already. So that could be to our advantage that we're already thinking about it and making some.
Yeah, Commerce was very complimentary, he said, oh, yeah, yeah, you've done a lot, yeah, you're, you're well into the game here, so. Now, whether that buys us any favor or to get the grant, I don't know.
Well, it may help bringing up ideas to them, because, yeah, with that housing grant. They didn't know half of what they were doing, because they'd never done one. It's like this. Yeah, it's a new grant, everybody gets excited, but they haven't figured out exactly what the process is. And they'll change it all the time.
I'd like to see, I guess, just continued, um, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of. Support in the community and the desire to have a facility. I don't think that there's anybody that you can ask that's gonna say, yes, I would like our taxes to ever be increased ever. But at the same time, um, there are a significant number of people I think that are in favor of having. A separate um, activity center apart from the school or where we're second to that if anybody wants to use that. And then indoor space for um, the winter time for people, which is a difficult thing here. Um, it's obviously appealing if there is an opportunity for a loan that fifty-five percent can be forgiven. Um, it's appealing to have the two point five million dollar grant potential. If that's something that we can bring to fruition, if we continue to talk about the possibility of. Implementing some of the needs for our community into that large plan. I would, I would love to see that, um, maybe with, you know, Commerce. Pivoting a little bit, just like with that, you know, as far as like what changes could be made, realizing that that's gonna increase some of the cost of this, but. Um, I, I mean, even in doing that, we won't be probably more than the sixteen million or could be potentially lower than that.
So do you want to specifically to ask if we could um, find a way to customize their blueprint to build? To include the program spaces that our facility had proposed? Is that the question that I would like to see that asked?
Did they say anything more about the add-on, not just the customize of their blueprint, but the add-on to their building? Did they say anything else about that?
Um, he just said. Possibly, but he said, don't get too carried away, we, we don't know for sure what we're doing, but.
Something, when you said, Brenda, we don't necessarily have time to mess around with it, I guess that's, that's. A question that's in my mind is that if we, if we make too many modifications, alterations, questions with this. Does that sort of unofficially disqualify us moving forward with their specific plan? Because it's different enough from what they're recommending, right? I mean, I don't, I don't want to ask so many questions that we, that we're not able to move forward if this. That being said, if, if this is the two point five ends up being, which is a significant number, and I don't need to minimize that at all, but. Will we, will we lose more than two point five million? will we, will we lose more than two point five million dollars worth of the benefit of this by, by pursuing this money? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I guess what I would, I would, because I think kind of that it's not all, it's stone, it's actually a benefit. Uh, because they're willing to flex a little and that fact that they've gone through the strategic doing process. I think that's going to hold a lot of water for them, that, that we've actually talked to the community first and we understand what they want. Um, so just note, I mean, I don't know a ton about Commerce, but the, the folks that are there now, they're very, they, they are very rural friendly and, uh, they work with communities really well. So
Okay.
I think, I don't think it hurts to push on that as, as they're in this space.
When I got the reference to this guy, a person I called said, this is the person you talked to at Commerce, I'll let him know. He called me back in less than ten minutes.
Good, okay.
They said, we'll make a connection with, with them and in less than ten minutes I had a call from it. And I called him back a couple of times. He picked up immediately. So, of course, I would agree with that.
Yes, I'm sure.
Not yet, not yet.
The thing I'd also say about this too, it just, the difference, uh, you know, a ten year sales tax for a very specific project, I think is something our community can get behind because it's, yeah, it doesn't, it's not going on forever. There is an end point and, um, you can't come back, you can't just keep extending it. You'd have to go to something again. And with, you know, what we passed tonight with the development agreement for the new housing, the housing that we have going in. We, you know, we've put in amenities over the last fifteen years to attract a workforce and to attract young families. They attract retirees. Um, this seems like a natural next step to do that. And if we can get it right, a third, a third, a third, I think is something our community, instead of just asking for the whole thing. If there's some legwork done on that end, I think our community can get behind it.
And remind me again, it's one point two a year, we would, is that what it amounts to?
On, on average, a one set sales tax would generate one point few million dollars per year.
So we maybe wouldn't even need ten years if we're worried about that being too long. I don't know. Cause what? Seven years gets us eight point four million, right? I don't know. I tried to do math here in front of you, sorry.
Ten years goes to twelve million.
Yeah, right, right.
If a hundred percent of it went toward building construction, you could generate twelve million for the building. I don't, I don't know that that would be a good recommendation. I think there's a lot of ways that we can use pieces of that for other things that the community needs. So this may support the facility. Um, but food for thought in general, one point two on average annually is what it, what is one percent sales tax would generate here.
I just wish I knew how to educate our community on what sales tax is. And I'm a former teacher, remember that? I think I know how to do this, but if everybody would just understand that Bellville and Lloyd and everybody else that's parked at Walmart is paying for this building, I think it would pass. But unfortunately, people hear tax and they say no a lot of times, but we would have to get the word out.
Sales tax is, is a good tool. A lot of cities use, I can think of, I think it was a half cent sales tax over at Lloyd that they used for ten years to help improve their streets. So if you go over there and you see their newer streets and sidewalks are really nice, um, that's part of what this came from. I remember several years ago, it might've been ten years ago now or more, uh, places that are built around a pool and they use a half cent sales tax to help fund that as well. So cities do this around our area pretty frequently.
What's the limit on sales tax?
So I think by state statute, we're limited to a total of two percent. We've used one percent. So we have a one percent wiggle room.
Right, I knew.
And there, there may be some other special outliers to be able to do more things, but in general, we, we have one percent wiggle room.
But if we did one percent, would we have enough money to make a portion of that infrastructure, portion of that, the community's facility? Like half cent for infrastructure, half cent for the facility. Depending, I mean, all that's up there depending on the cost of the facility.
Sure. And, and you could do that. You could say, let's say that, uh, we talked about putting a, a question on the ballot that said, would you support a one set sales tax to support the construction? Operation of a community activities center as well as, um, street maintenance and repair, for example. You could have something be that broad, it gives a little bit of flexibility, but then you could decide which portion of it goes towards street maintenance, which portion of it goes toward construction, which portion goes to operations. And that would be a fairly clear, clear question, I think, for people to, to have on the ballot. Does that answer your question? Yeah, I would just want to be careful that if we needed all of it for that, that we don't sell it based on, you know, if, yeah, if, you know, I think we would have to have a pretty good idea of, uh, what we're hoping to get out of that and make the other parts secure.
Yeah, at, at the time that we put that question on the ballot and it, it may not be, uh, I, I need to do additional research of how you structure ballot questions, but the ones that I've seen have been sufficiently detailed so people understand what they're voting for, but sufficiently vague to give, give you a little bit of flexibility. I think for our community, it's going to be important that as we discuss it, um, and talk about it, that if, if we know maybe what that percentage split is intended to be, to be able to talk about that as a talking point would be a really important thing for us.
Well, I think we've had, uh, maybe some uncertainty as to where those monies would be going. I think the, the greatest degree of clarity we can share is going to increase our, our odds of being able to pass this. I think if, if people have even a, an idea uh, that it's, that it's not going towards that, it's, it's going to be a real difficult challenge to overcome. And I certainly don't think that that's our intent. So making sure that we, we have that, uh, ahead of time before we even have any sort of discussion about moving forward is going to be paramount.
So then if we go back to the timeline discussion, if you look at, um, under funding options, under construction, we listed some different, uh, grant opportunities there. So the blueprint to build Commerce grants, the application window is open now. And we have until November fourteenth to apply, but as Brenda mentioned, there's a letter of intent. What do you intend to do? It's kind of like a pre-application. But Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but as you get into the application further, it asks if there's been a resolution passed by the governing body. If, if, if a public vote is required to fund a portion of that grant match, for example, have, do you have that resolution ready? So if, if the commission leans toward a portion of this should be funded by a sales tax or, or it couldn't be done without that, for example, we would want to get far, far enough in that conversation such that we can get that resolution so that we can continue that application. So that, that's something to think about. The other one is the Patterson Family Foundation. They also asked for a letter of intent and those are due July third, uh, for, for this year for funding. Um, why that might be important, not that we want to rush into anything. This is a very big decision. We want to make sure that we're making good decisions. Um, but again, if, if we were to apply for that grant or a particular piece of the programming that we, or the scope of facility that we want to have, getting the application in now allows us to be potentially awarded and then we can use that as more leverage for other grants or other requests for donations to say we have this much funding, we need this much more. As, as an example, the Sunderland Foundation, um, they typically accept applications, um, that, at various times, but right now their application window isn't open because they're doing a little bit of restructuring. So we don't know what that's going to be. We'll have to monitor that. Danger Hanson takes applications at any time, but again, we know from those previous applications that they want to see, um, your other contributions toward it. They don't want to be the primary fund or they want to make sure that you, that you're committed in other ways as well. So that, that's also kind of a consideration of timing, um, and so I, I guess I would make the ask, um, I, I've got my notes here. We want to find out for sure if we can do the value of the land that we already have as, that was donated to us for recreation purposes as part of the match. As you recall, we, we are looking at the Razorfield site. That's like selected last December. Um, we want clarity on the USDA low interest loan. I looked up very briefly here. I know the city qualifies, but I want to get that how piece answered for us to make sure that we're doing what, what we need to do. And then how much customization or bolt-on of the additional pieces can we do with the blueprint to build and not jeopardize that funding? So in, in my mind, if we build their large facility and then we bolt on the top lot, we bolt on the pickleball courts, if we can clearly delineate that that funding comes from somewhere else, is that a hard enough line for them? Can we still build it all at the same time and gain some efficiencies and economies of scale? So that, those are the kind of questions I, I want to have answered.
And could I, yes, say one other Brandon thought I had late this afternoon or the middle of night last night? I don't know. It's all kind of going together right now. Um. I wondered about just blowing up the size of what they, what they've drawn here.
Increase it by a percent.
Keep the same, keep the exact same plan, only in blowing it up, which would allow us to get the few things we're talking about. One thing we would definitely have to ask him, and I would, is that the structural engineering has to happen when it is built in order to have it beat up enough to have an elevated walking track. That would obviously have to be in the initial build, that, that specific piece would. And just blowing up the building, making it bigger. I don't mean blowing it up, but making it bigger, um, uh, uh. I don't know if that's, if that's still sticking with their plan per se.
Well, we could definitely ask the same question. What other information would you guys need us to bring back to you to help make a decision on, yes, continue with these grant applications? Yes, prepare a ballot question if that's the direction we want to go. What, what else do you need from us?
Well, the USDA.
Yeah, yeah, the certification of that, yes. I think that, that would pro, I mean, be probably sufficient information. We'd need a more firm, yes, dollar amount and what, what's all included in the plan? And then what funding potentially that is, you know, um, available to us? And then what the city's portion, you know, would, would it be a third? Can we make the third word? And then what does that look like for the sales tax then?
Yeah, it's doable, I guess. Get those answers back and bring them back then.
I think it's really encouraging and I just love to see it. I think we've been talking about it. I think we have a lot of community support for it, at least verbally. But it's been on the horizon for all.
We have the action agendas, the minutes of the May seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I moved over through the minutes of the May seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
I think we have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Lambert to approve the minutes. I think we'll, their discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance number nine.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number nine.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hudson to approve appropriation ordinance number nine. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign. Motion passes. And moving on to the sanitary sewer main extension project bids.
Good evening, commissioners. In your packet, you have, uh, two items submitted from my office. You have the bidder's tabulation, uh, for this project and then the layer of recommendation. I'd like to speak briefly to the tabulation first. Uh, here on the ninth of May, we had three complete bids for this project um, to extend the sanitary sewer in Kansas Street, uh, to assist in the development of, um, Mr. Le Duke, uh, in that area. The first column on the left is my engineer's estimate of fifty-eight thousand four hundred. That is based on what I believe the current going rate is for a project like this. Um, the three bids we received were from Hood Heating and Air right here in town for a cost of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, from Smokey Hill Construction out of Salina for a cost of eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars. And from Midlands Contracting out of Carney, Nebraska for thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, when Amy and I opened these bids, we were concerned that there was a large bearing price range in these and that, um, none of them seemed to be very close to what I thought the project ought to be, either way more or considerably less. But we were encouraged that we had received a price that was less than what we thought it might take to build this project. And so I spoke to Midlands Contracting out of Carney. I spoke to the owner. This is what they believe they can build this project for. Um, his words were, we are desperately hungry for work right now. And as a result, they sharpened their pencil down to the dub on this one. They are expecting to come in and start just as soon as the city will sign a contract and get them going, which aids in the development of that area there. Um, they, if you guys approved them tonight, they are hoping to start next week and be done a week later with that project. So, um, that was encouraging. He then asked me how much money he left on the table and I shared that with him. Uh, but then again, he reiterated, uh, we need, I need work to keep my guys busy. This is why we got this price there then, type of that. So. They are, they are willing to stand behind this price. They are willing to enter into a contract with the city of Concordia to build this project for that price. And then for reference, uh, Midlands has performed work within the city of Concordia in the past. They have built water and sewer infrastructure. We have worked with them. Jeremy's worked with them. We know that they are reputable company. This is not just some startup fly by night that threw a wild price at this project to get going. They, I know they will come in and do a good job of this project. And you will have me out there the entire time they're working to ensure that that happens as well too. So therefore, um, I, I'm open to any questions. My recommendation to you then will be, would be to enter into a contract with, uh, Midlands Contracting to get this project built.
Jason, do you have any idea how recently they have worked here? I mean, Jeremy might know.
By recent, I would say not in the last ten years.
Okay.
Um, uh, most of our utilities projects have gone to other contractors in the last ten years. Um, some of that might have to do just with the distance that Carney is from Concordia, um, and that we have all several other closer qualified utility contractors that typically pick up our projects here at Concordia. Does that answer your question?
It does. The difference in price still is a concern, I think.
Okay.
I mean, I'm always up for a bargain, but, but, um.
If it makes, maybe if it makes you feel any better, that price also includes, um, about ten percent contingency as well too. So if we get into that project and something occurs that is unexpected, there is some built into that. I'm not expecting that to happen. Uh, I, I know there, there is sort of a reverse sticker shock here, so to speak. But when you boil this project down, it is very simple in nature. The location where it is going is in a, a, a area that's undeveloped. Just the, that portion of Kansas Street is, there's no actual street there. Um, the utilities, there are no utilities that are now in the way of this. It would be similar to if you just went out into the middle of a pasture and built two hundred feet of sewer. And thus that lends to a lower price as well too. There's not a, a lot of logistics for confined spaces that they're having to deal with to build this project as well too. Um, on the flip side of that, you know, you have the much larger price of hoods, which I was really hoping that hood would give us a lower price, being the contractor right here in town. Uh, but this not being one of their primary models for what they do within their business. I think some of their cost was inflated by the, the equipment that they might have to rent or mobilize to do a project like this. The one that was closest to us is Smokey Hill out of, uh, Salina. They are one of the more recent utility contractors that have worked within the city. And, uh, they would do a great job as well too. And but, and their unit prices were more in line of what I thought we would get for this project. I think we just happened to hit a contractor at a moment of need, so to speak. Now it is up to you to decide whether you want, are comfortable in taking advantage of that.
Wait, when I, when I'm looking at this sheet, it looks like, I mean, either they have uh, the, the PVC in stock or they're able to get it. But I mean, that's.
That, that is the other possibility. So if you put your construction hat on, this is a small project. We're only talking about two hundred linear. Two hundred linear feet of pipe and a single con- concrete manhole. The concrete manhole, no matter who you are, has to be built specifically for that location for this project. But yeah, if you had two hundred feet left over of pipe from another project, that would be a way that you could sharpen your pencil and maybe try to beat the next guy in town. The other one typically that is kind of. The slush fund line item is the mobilization. A lot of people throw a ton of extra money into the mobilization to kind of cover things that they can't account for type of thing. Um, and you see that, you see that i- in Smokey Hills, uh, uh, number, their mobilization. Uh, is is quite a bit higher, um, type of thing, whereas Midlands, who's coming from much smaller, is much less. And so. That I'm my, I'm guessing they cut a lot of the chaff out of that that mobilization number as well, too.
Well, when I, when you said reverse sticker shock, that's when I was processing this and I kind of sort of looked at. If if they are hungry, then they can get on the road quicker, easier. And if they've got some leftover material.
Right. And if it's a matter of paying their guys to push a broom around the shop. Or pay them to go to Concordia and do a work, they would much prefer to pay them to go to Concordia to do the work.
I mean, if you look at, if you look at those, those two specific line items, really, that's where.
Yep, absolutely.
So are they in, I mean, I hate to ask a stupid question.
There's no stupid question.
Question probably, but are they bonded and insured and all of that?
Absolutely. So with their, that is part of what we require to do a project. They submitted the bid bonds they were required. Their bids weren't totally in order. They will be required to submit a statutory and performance and maintenance bond along with this, the signed contracts. Just like we would require of any of our other investors. Then, yes, absolutely. So we will, right up until the moment they start, we will dot all the i's and cross all the t's to make sure that. That we're not, you know, something fishy isn't going on there, so to speak.
I I've moved to award the contractor sanitary sewer main extension project in Midlands Contracting for thirty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch. Award the contract for the sanitary sewer main extension project to them contracting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next, we have the property and liability insurance quotes.
Um. We did bring you a recommendation. As the memo says, um, really, they were both. Pretty equal in what they covered. It really boiled down to, we've worked with NPR for many years and there's been absolutely no complaints about them. The money is a little less. It's not significant. Um, but just knowing what we have now, um. And I'm sure that if we went with Excel, we would get an excellent product as well. I personally would have no problem working with either, but, um. With them with NPR for twelve years and we've had good success, so.
I had some questions.
Yes.
Um. Contents of the Brown Grand. There's nothing said about that under.
NPR. It's, um, a hundred thousand, if I remember right, which I think is really way too low. But no, that isn't in there. And I believe. Yeah, building and contents limit matched by. By XO and they kind of, they questioned that with me, too. When we went to the, to the Brown Grand and walked through it. So that is something that. I think we'll need to discuss and adjust that.
With with either.
With, I, yes.
So the issue is with both. The concern would be with both.
Because I don't know what the seats cost, but my loan was probably more. I know that some of the posters are separate. They're listed separate.
I think it doesn't all seem to be itemized, though.
On with the wind one is for sure. And some of them, I don't know how you'd find a value, but.
There's that guy on Antiques Roach.
That's such that. We might wish we didn't invite him.
I'm sure, I'm sure Melissa could probably get us.
Another thing I I wondered about was, uh, there's no pollution coverage. Uh, under. In NPR.
Um, correct. Uh, the only difference there is that. EMC would give. Pollution coverage for the treatment plant and the swimming pool, but not any other property. So. Neither has it for everything, but those are probably going to be your two main. I don't know exactly what kind of coverage that would be.
Well, I don't think it will have it things for the wastewater treatment plant, you know. That wasn't there. I'm, I'm not trying to pick on one company, but I was comparing things. Uh. And then I, I wasn't sure about the last abuse. Uh. The limits are quite a bit. Different.
Yeah, one million for EMC, five and six million for. Well, NPR. They do have some higher limits, I I believe, because Missouri is also covered in this pool and Missouri has. Well. I don't know if I should say that either, because there is a. There's two separate.
They have to be two separate.
Yeah, they're, they're separate. That's true.
But even with those higher pool amount, that, those higher amounts doesn't significantly change the price, so.
No, no.
It's, it's significantly more coverage or relatively the same.
For that.
For those things.
And why, I mean, is there a reason why pollution wouldn't be covered in that? And you know, I mean, that is that not covered by any of? Like, do they just not cover that to any of their municipalities that they're insuring?
Right.
Is that normally a FEMA covered item? Because if it is, then it doesn't necessarily make sense to have it on insurance.
Well. Yeah, and they don't provide different coverage for different entities other than than hail, wind and hail. Um, some of the cities that wanted a lesser premium or contribution went with higher deductibles. That's the only thing really you can, you have control over.
Really, it seems favorable, especially, um, considering the long relationship and that the, it it wasn't a. I guess it wasn't enough of an advantage at this point to switch. Um, however, it would be good to have them reassess the coverage of the brand grant being. Lower and especially, you know, even as we talk about community centers where. You know, years ago, I could have built that for a lot less. It's significantly more now, so. So likewise would be the ground grant. And I know she, when she came in, she had said, well, we'll still cover it, the value, but. That's not on the over.
So when we first went with them, one of the big things about them, we had EMC before. NPR with through IMA Corporation in Wichita. And. Every time you say you got a new vehicle, you immediately had to put that on there because there was no coverage if you didn't tell them. Um, NPR always said, we take that into under account that you might forget about things. And. So they weren't so picky about that. Well, they changed that a little bit, obviously. You know, they, they want you to get that on the list as soon as you can. But they do take that in under account just a little bit. Um. If it was a complete loss at the Brown Grand, I don't know. If you'd see more than a hundred thousand for the contents or not, probably not.
I I would like to see that, I guess that piece looked in through for coverage, at least, um. And then maybe just, you know, the the pollution part, just to make sure that that's essentially the reason why not. Otherwise, it it seems pretty reasonable to just continue.
They could probably adjust that. Well, I'm sure they could adjust that mid-year. Uh, when we added. Just air. We just added two million dollars. Think of the last thing we added, but.
Tire truck or?
No, we property. There was nothing. And I let them know, it was, it was when I was getting the information together that I have to provide for them so they can. Base what what our coverage is on what their renewal is going to be. And I put that in there and it, it changed it enough that they sent us another bill for, I think, nineteen hundred dollars. So, um. Usually when we send something, if it's not that much. I think usually a a million is where they go, whoa, we need a little extra money right now. But otherwise, if it's not that much higher, if it's half a million dollars. That amount doesn't change throughout the year. It stays at this one sixty eight.
So that was, that was a little bit of a discount this year, but.
Yes.
Let those costs go up again next year.
But if I, if I do ask for. More coverage on the Brown Grand, I don't, I don't think that would affect this, is what I'm saying. It might affect it next year.
We can give additional bids next year. You know, we can do this every year. And we need, I think.
How does this compare to what we didn't pay?
This one sixty eight. Um, for this year, I think we're one fifty nine. It was a hundred fifty nine thousand, do you remember?
A little bit of the insurance world that I'm privy to.
Yeah.
That ain't bad.
That's not bad.
No.
Uh, but also I think that relationships are important. I I'm very. I feel very confident that we would have a positive relationship with with EMC and the Excel group. Uh, I think that, I think that the. They're certainly well connected to Concordia and understand Concordia. Uh, I also understand that we have a positive relationship with NPR. And those relationships, I think, really in a, in a good position that we don't have a bad choice. But with that, I don't, I don't necessarily see that we have enough of a reason to really move.
And I would, you know, we've talked with them about, um, employee benefits and work comp. And, um, I'm sure they will still. It comes around to that, which will be, really, we need to start working on that now because our renewal is October for employee benefits. And they can take the whole, the whole thing, kind of like what we have right now with hub. Um, and do the additional things. Like accident plans and that kind of thing. I don't like Aflac. They'll work with all of that.
As Ashley said, I think it's, I think it's good for us to reevaluate this and I would want to continue fostering those relationships that we can, make sure we're getting the best deals.
I I remember when we went with this. And it was a, a significant savings, as I recall. And we thought, we'll try it and see and, you know, it sounds like you're, we've been satisfied. Yeah, there's. There was one time, if not two, that they weren't going to cover something and I called them. And talked to the CEO and explained things and they went to the board and came back and said, we'll cover it. Doesn't always happen with insurance. There's, there's never been a time, I mean, unless they denied the claim altogether. Which isn't very often. And it's, it's not something that the city is still on the hook for, with what they denied. Then, um, they've always, they've always just paid. They've been very good.
And with that, I would approve continuing the mid, with Midwest Public Risk for property and liability for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
You have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Went. To approve continuing with Midwest, Midwest Public Risk. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. Motion passes. And moving on to resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two zero two, adoption of the FEMA Regional F Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, commissioners. This is a bit of a formality. Um, every five years, we have to adopt the hazard mitigation plan that's associated with our county. And then this makes us eligible for any FEMA hazard mitigation grant funding that does become available to us. Uh, we did it off this five years ago. Not much has changed with the plan. The. Few changes that did occur, you might recall a few months ago, we went through different mitigating actions and associated plan and work that we could do. It was kind of a matrix grid format. It took us a little while to work through it, but we eventually, uh, got through it and passed it, submitted it, and and then it was added to the plan. So those are the only, only changes from last year. So I'd ask that you'd approve this resolution, um, adopting this plan for this, the the next five years and we'll submit that back to James Cohen and he'll get it off the state.
And to approve resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two oh two.
Second.
You have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two zero two. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All of those same sign. Motion passes. Resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two zero three, setting a public hearing for four twenty five west night.
This is, uh. You have my condition report and this is always the way we start the process. For the condemnation episode of public hearing day. Do add then thirty days later, so it sets it up for July second. On four twenty five west nine.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two oh three. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Went to approve resolution twenty twenty five, twenty two zero three. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Hey.
Nineteen oh five Broadway demo program application.
Supposed to be nineteen fifteen, I think. The best David Frank's project with child trailer park, he's been. Removing. Light up there and trying to get set up. He's running a couple. Slow periods, uh, he was sitting on these, trying to get some sold and he had some interest in this double wide and he decided. To try and put it on the demo program. I don't have any problem with it. I don't think he should even. Entertain the idea of trying to sell it, just get rid of it, get going and get this project done. So my recommendation is accept it in the program. Based on, uh. I would have dealt with a little bit, seven. Now, four thousand. Seven thousand for the double wide, yeah. Seven thousand from one and twelve thousand from the other, yeah. So based on a little bit of time.
I move to approve the trailer house at nineteen fifteen Broadway. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where it's supposed to be.
Into the demo program and authorize the city manager to sign. The contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of seven thousand dollars. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Went. To approve the trailer house at nineteen oh five into the demo program. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Board of Building Trades appointments.
Yeah, these two positions. On the board, uh, Dan Groun and Luca, they both serve a couple of terms and. Their terms are due, uh, end of this month and they both expressed interest to serve another, serve some more, so. With that, with nobody else wanting to serve, we, we up them, recommend that we definitely go back into the Board of Building Trades other term.
I've been reappointing James Reynolds, Luca to the Board of Building Trades.
That is it.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hatch to reappoint, uh, James Reynolds and Luke Hood into, through the Board of Building Trades. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All of those same sign. Motion passes. And ordinance twenty twenty five, thirty two, thirty five, public vending.
Right, revisiting this again, um. Took some of your suggestions here, um, about. Increasing the penalty. Kind of just an idea. We wanted to do a higher penalty and a second offense. I did look through what you discussed on eleven. Five oh six to find if any of those should be not. Accepted. And came up with a couple of those that should probably be in the other section. That should come in and and at least get a license. And. That should come in and and at least get a license and. And then throughout the idea of still charging something, I'm definitely open to keeping that free if that's what you'd like. I just think that if we do that, we need to really educate the public because they hear free and they. Just go for it. So anyway, my main concern then is just getting people to come in and and at least provide the information that we have. Have requested from them and I think that will help clean up a lot of things.
Will you remind me, do we do background checks?
No.
Okay.
We do for solicitors, but not for vendors. And I think mainly the thing with that would just be that we get maybe enough information that we wouldn't. I think if you had a vendor that sold alcohol and I'm trying to think how you could even do that. You probably would, we do a background check for things like that. But almost every city that I looked at does background checks.
Would you wanna add that into it?
I don't know, I just, well, that to me, if we were doing those and we're absorbing the cost, then that would make more sense to. Uh move pass that along to the vendor.
It takes a while to get a background. Well, yeah, and I mean, the way we've worked it now is pretty much when somebody comes in, they get that within. Half a day. Which sometimes works out okay if I'm here or Megan here is here to sign those. Um but. I wanted, I thought about putting something in that said we had so many days to come back then, but I know sometimes when people come to towns. Maybe they're not aware of what they need to do, we've seen that before, they're ready to set up at the plaza and then. They get notification, they need to come over here, so sometimes they need it within, you know, an hour.
I I think though that we have, we've hired a Broadway Plaza Coordinator and if they're soliciting food trucks, it is their job to inform them of the rules. That we have likewise, if we are recruiting, you know, business and that's part of their business plan. That is, we need to get better about our folks uh passing along what those rules are. Uh there should not be surprises, it shouldn't be, so I I I I think we do need to get better at that. The the only thing I would think about, you know, the fee, it was kind of that compromise of we eliminate the fee. Then it's on, then that that's a that's a nice thing for us to do to try to attract these folks to come in. But it's the penalty side that if you don't, I mean that, so if we go back to the fee, then. What's the use of doing the penalty too, I mean, it kind of retracts of what our original intent was, so I like to see the fee removed. Um and just go with the um, you know, if. The if you get if the five hundred dollars or if you wanna do a thousand, I guess that would. Make it so bad actors don't man twice, but.
So it's a little concerned about uh food sales. To me, this tells me like the Catholic Church bizarre is gonna have to have a license.
I mean churches are in the church there.
No, they are.
They were prior.
They are number four under. Sexiest.
Five oh six D.
Yeah. Five oh six D. Or the four H booth at the fair, maybe that's in the county. But even our Thanksgiving dinner, the church means we have that, we have to apply for a license.
Right, yeah, that one probably would need to stay the way it was. When it said the sales and displays at fairs, convention or shows, to me, that meant that someone was actually going to bring in someone who was a legitimate food truck. But I think the one we were talking about churches and that kind of thing likely would not be that way.
Are those donation, goodwill donations or something?
Well, most of them are, but still.
Yeah, it was under the exemption prior. The exemption is events sponsored by nonprofit organizations, so if your church is a nonprofit and they were sponsoring your Thanksgiving dinner, for example, then that. Would exempt them, correct?
Yeah, except for this. Number four and under D, it's a contradiction really.
The interpretation of food sales is probably where we're getting stuck.
Right, that because if food sales would be like if you're having someone come in and they're selling food at your event.
But if we have that confusion, then certainly they will.
So if number four was put back up in your exemptions, solve that problem, I think so too.
Or adding commercial.
You know.
Commercial food sales or displays?
Would that be sufficient?
I think so, um or we, I mean, if that would accomplish the goal.
Certainly, yeah.
So the two modifications would be to strike the fee. Right? Add commercial food sales. Right?
Eleven oh six would be three and four or just four?
Uh I don't, I don't see an issue with three.
Because that would include, three would include uh ball fits. Things left there, yeah.
So just a four? So. I I mean, one scenario that I'm thinking is there is a an auction that takes place in town and they sell. Like concessions or food, that that would technically be commercial. So is that something that wasn't before and is now required to have a vending license?
Just so candy bars and pop?
Uh like sloppy joes and pop and chips or, you know what I mean, yeah.
That usually been by a nonprofit or? Like a four H club or?
No, like an auction, like um an auctioneer auction, you know? Is that then required?
I mean, based on, based on this change specifically with sales, fairs, auctions, bazaars.
An auctioneer selling sloppy joes is different than a four H kid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So eliminate, I mean, they're selling it for income.
I think kind of they have one of those nonprofit groups come in and and provide the food and and. Starter the income from the, the the auctioneer themselves isn't making the money off of the food. At least the the ones I've been to, they'll they'll have a church come in, they'll have a boy scout group come in, they'll have come in and do it.
Well, then that would fall under the nonprofit exemption, correct?
And wouldn't be commercial.
But the one you're talking about would be.
Yeah.
Well, I think as long as we educate people. About this.
Perhaps it perhaps that commercial auctioneer then would like to offer that opportunity to a local nonprofit.
Right.
Well, or I mean, the only difference is you just have to get a vendor license for a year, which is free, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Pay the sales tax on her.
But you'd have to show your license with the state to sell food. And you're preparing in a commercial kitchen, correct? I mean, that's what your license would state, like you have to show proof that your license would say, which means you have to.
And then you have to collect school tax.
Yeah.
On it.
And perhaps they'd like offer that to the nonprofit.
That being that the armory and the armory has a lot of different things that they, a lot of hoops they'll make you jump through. So if you're gonna be selling food out of that kitchen, you're gonna have to provide all of that to them, so you're gonna have to be probably already. Collecting sales tax and doing that kind of stuff unless it's a nonprofit organization company.
Okay, so it should be a non-issue.
I can't, yeah, I've never been to a.
Or maybe to print, if it is an issue, it's not on our part.
Exactly. It would, yeah, because it would, if if it's a part of that, it, let's say it's just an auction house and that auction house isn't selling food. And they are supposed to be paying sales tax on that. Or collecting sales tax on that because it would be.
And maybe they are, I don't, I don't.
I I have no idea, I I've never been to one that didn't, that didn't just have like, you know, baseball team or somebody in there selling it, so.
The state is. Adamant, they collect sales tax on this kind of thing because I get letters wanting. Them wanting me to provide names and all that, which I never return that. I don't really feel like that's my job to make sure they collect their sales tax. And it must not be required because they never follow up. But they know that's out there and they know people aren't paying it.
So one of the things we try to do when we're crafting ordinance is that we can hit ninety percent of the situations that we can think of, it's a pretty good ordinance. And then we use professional discretion and the rest of them, would that be an appropriate way to handle this at this point in time?
So would it be fair to? Approve ordinance twenty twenty-five, thirty-two, thirty-five with amended. To eliminate the fee um and adding commercial food sales to eleven five oh six D four.
Second.
You agree?
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hudson to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five, thirty-two, thirty-five. Um with the mentioned changes, any further discussion?
I thought we were gonna move four uh to nine.
We made a decision to make it commercial to.
Oh, I thought that was three, you were doing.
No.
No, three should be sufficient as it is, if we add commercial to four, then it would separate out the.
Okay.
The Thanksgiving or the fish fries and and whatnot.
Yeah.
Cause that's not a commercial food sale, that'd still be your donation and your.
I mean, I would say, yeah, and so concession stands have nothing, like there's no concession stands that have anything really to do with this. As far as. Anything, I guess.
Like a high school or the ball field or things like that?
Right, well, I know the ball field in that city, but yeah, like anything you could think of that.
The school would be a nonprofit.
Yeah, okay.
That's well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. And the brand grand boiler HVAC solution.
Mary Commissioner, last December, we had open bids for some replacement boiler piping, it's a little bit of HVAC work. Help out of the brown brand, we rejected those bids because I can learn significantly higher than what we had budgeted and you authorized us to go back and work with codes on a more effective solution. So following that, we went back in and they did some testing with a device that was allowed to check for leaks, specifically some humidity checks. And they found none, and they also did another test on some pipes that checked like the thinness or thickness of walls and found out that the rest of the piping seemed to. Still be in pretty good shape, so with the cost effective solution we've come up with is that right now, if we add some humidity sensors into the cavity that has the boiler pipes. That's easier to do, so it's it's less labor intensive and then it'll help us detect if there are any leaks in the future, then we know where to go to replace the pipes. And then we'd also ask to add a couple of new drives on the air handlers for smoother and quieter operations upon startup, so if you've been to the brown brand and those air handlers start up. You can hear kind of a squeal and a kaboom. And and this just now would be an example of a startup, so we could, we could change that in and and have it be um a a little bit nicer experience for those. Inside the brown ground and and experiencing that, um this more cost effective solution would take us down to thirteen thousand three hundred for the humidity sensors along the boiler piping. Plus forty-two fifty for the drives for the air handler units, I would ask that you would approve that tonight, I hope we would get that work done. Here before before the fall season.
I move to approve the quotes from hood heating and air for humidity sensors for thirteen thousand three hundred for two new drives for the air handlers for four thousand two hundred fifty.
A motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Lambert to approve the quote of hood heating and air. For the boiler and HVAC system around here. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Federal funds exchange for twenty twenty-five.
Federal fund exchange program is voluntary program in which the uh local. Public agencies can trade in federal obligation authority with KDOT. Or another local agency in exchange for state funds, the state funds are paid on a reimbursement basis. As the uh local public agency incurs costs. This exchange program will allow the city to receive ninety percent of the funds to be exchanged. The amount of funds to be exchanged this year is seventy-two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and two cents of this amount. The city will receive sixty-four thousand nine hundred forty dollars and forty-two cents. This exchange will allow the city to be more flexible with these city spots. Questions of that?
They're starting about different than. It's lower than what it has been in past years. I prior to the.
It it fluctuates, um it's, is it project dependent? Or is it just annual allocation? It's not, it's not.
It's pretty similar to last year.
It's similar, it's it's not.
It's not the exact same, but it's very simple. I moved to authorize the mayor to sign the request for federal funds exchange, the amount of seventy-two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and two cents to apply for reimbursement. At sixty-four thousand nine hundred forty dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Wentz to assist the federal funds exchange, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Uh manager's report.
Mary Commissioner, just two quick items, um update on the housing project, we had open house last Wednesday, so thank you for those of you that have come and toured that first house, the St. Justin subdivision. Closing was yesterday and the new owners have moved in this week, so they're very happy, but we're very excited to achieve this milestone in the project. Um number two, visited a little bit with Jeremy and then with with Devling about the flash pad, um given the persistent drought conditions that we're in. We're by year three or four of drought, Governor Kelly just declared another uh drought declaration. We compared that to our water conservation plan that you authorized last year, we're definitely in a water watch situation and we believe that it's appropriate. Given that persistent drought condition to go ahead and curtail some of the use of this flash pad. Which means that we'll be reducing hours for this season to noon to seven P M, so it's a little bit shorter than what it has been. But it should save us quite a bit of water, um as that water is used, it goes straight into sanitary sewer system. I believe that that's correct, it's not recycled at all to be reused, and so it's just a pumplin dump type situation. Um we want, we want to be good steward of the natural resource that we have and we encourage our friends, family and neighbors to do the same thing.
What were the hours prior?
What were the hours?
It was like ten o'clock to. Pass the eight. P M, so.
So we're reducing about three hours a day is all we're reducing, so.
Still open hearts, pardon.
Yes, absolutely. And then I guess I'd ask, as we get down to the um executive sessions, Mr. Larson is here now, so if we could amend that to add the executive session. At the end here and bring them in, that'd be great. Stop for four.
Just wanna give a little update, um street crew's been working on a storm drain. In the light empire. Prompted us for this is there was a hole in the sidewalk we could see through.
Street supervisor and I went down and there was a horizontal break in the wall about forty. Forty or forty two feet long, from the light post almost all the way to the alley. Uh, so we peeled off the top of. In the process of possibly putting a wall in front of it, it was just too deteriorated, so we had to take out the wall next to it, so. Um, but tomorrow, we're hopeful we're gonna pour the top of that and should be back to normal next week, so. So guys, an update on that.
I'm not sure if you guys are aware or not, but James Quell and the Director of Emergency Personnel is retiring. It was listed in the paper that I was gonna be the new intern, that is not correct. Um, the L A P C board, which governs a lot of the stuff that talk about. I'm the president of, and that's the way it was supposed to be ruled, but I just want to clarify that I am not taking that position in terms of.
Too much time on your hands, aren't you?
Yeah.
Any other staff reports? Mary Commissioner comments and reports. I did have um, one thing uh, that I I had um, said I would bring up at the meeting, there was a. A parent who had, who had missed the deadline for their recreation league and felt like. Felt like communication could potentially be enhanced, especially for those maybe that are new to the community. Um, it was apparent that there was a lot of, you know, as I researched, a lot of uh. Options for communication and then there is a grace period of a week, but I just wanted to encourage, I guess, just anyway, especially for like new families. And the community, um, that we make sure, and is there a text, that was my other question, is there a text caster, we do that or is that just the county? I guess part of our.
Be at Everbridge.
The Everbridge.
I use it all the rec gas facility with it.
Could we do a text message for weeks? Would that be, I mean, just like a different avenue of communication that maybe would reach more people, and I think you'd specifically have to be. Uh, signed up for parks and rec, right, to receive those.
At least a different text caster in Everbridge to receive those too.
Right, but so if you are new to the community, do we send out information about text casters to our new water bill? Recipients, because perhaps then that could be a solution to that, because people can't sign up for something they don't know about. And I I I guess I can speak for personal experience being at one point several years ago, new to this community, it was very difficult. To figure out what was going on ever, because everyone's lived here forever and they're just like, don't you know that there's an Easter egg hunt at the parks? Or don't you know that you can sign your kids up? And I'm like, oh, I don't know, where do you find this stuff out at? The only way, and I did, I was blessed to have a neighbor who always included us because she had young kids too and she knew that we didn't know about those things, so whatever way. Um, it sounds like your communication was adequate, uh, um, especially in in um, that and I, so I'm not. I just, I want to, whatever way we can the best to encourage, especially new people that move to, to let them know. What's, what the happenings are.
I I think the idea about a flyer and a new name on a mail, a water bill would be.
When someone comes in to sign up for new service and they know that it's somebody new, we do have a paper we give them, but tells them about um. Oh, the phone numbers for electric and gas and and um. Trash service and that kind of thing, we could add this.
Well, hey, fantastic, right, again, just one last thing, though.
Right, just covering all the bases, I guess, and and help if new people, sure. Alright. You might get a sessions.
Want to do personnel first, or the other one first? I move that the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data, trade secrets of a business, K S A. Seventy five forty three nineteen B four with Annie Lang, Chase Larson and Justin Farrell in attendance. And reconvene in the city commission chamber at, so fifteen minutes. Uh, at eight thirteen.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Hatch to recess into executive session. Over till like thirteen, any further discussion, all in favor? All of those same signs, a few passes. No action was taken.
Uh, I move the city commission recess into executive session to discuss personnel issues pursuant to non-elected personnel matter exception. K S A seventy five forty three nineteen B one, Annie Lang in attendance, and reconvene in the city commission chamber at eight twenty five, yeah.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hudson, second by Commissioner Lambert to uh, to to move into executive access. All in favor? All of those same sign, motion. No action was taken.
I move to adjourn. To the land bank meeting.
Yes. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hatch to adjourn the city commission meeting and then convene into the. For your land bank meeting. Okay, so, health order, we have a quorum. Public comments, going from the public, new business, the sale of real estate at one 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 zero Highland Drive.
Well, Director, as I mentioned previously, we've sold our first home in St. Joseph subdivision and the new owners closed on the property yesterday. Um, we are learning as we go along and so we will be approving our communication going forward, but we do need this board to formally take action to be the property. The land that the house sits on to the new owners, so I believe you have that information in the packet. Should be um, a motion available and would ask that you approve the sale of real estate at eleven ten Highland Drive, please.
Move to approve the sale of property located at eleven hundred ten Highland Drive. From Concordia Land Bank to Richard and Barbara Cassidy, an effective date of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Six. We have a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Quince, uh, for the sale of real estate of one 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 zero Highland Drive. Any further discussion? All in favor? All of those same sign, motion passes. We have a motion to adjourn.
I moved it, we adjourn, second.
We have a motion by Fisher, hash, second by Commissioner Lambert to adjourn the meeting, any further discussion? I think that that those deeds do require all signatures, so it'd be something. All in favor? I like, all of those same signs, motion passes, meeting is adjourned.